All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, January 22. If we could have a roll call to establish court, Madam Clark.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Steve Holfield.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Autumn Slane.
Here.
David Avanzino.
Here.
And Terry McClung's absent of notice.
All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a couple of items on here. One, because of computer misfunctions, we don't have the minutes for January the 8th, so we'll be deferring that until our next meeting. Also, for the CAPC, fourth quarter financials, those are not ready yet, and neither are the fourth quarter financials for the parks. So those will be coming up later on. So yeah, I think that's it at this point in time. Is there anything else, anybody?
It's the H, I accidentally put the fourth quarter under HDC, it's actually cemetery.
Yeah, okay.
And they did turn those in.
All right, get a motion, get a, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'm gonna get a motion to approve the minutes for January, we're just not gonna do that one. There I am, I'm just saying. All right, that brings us up to our commission reports. We have Kent Turner is here, chairman of the hospital, and he's going to present the 21, 22 audit for the hospital board and make the presentation. So thank you for coming, Kent.
Thank you all very much for having me. It has been a long time getting here. You should have had in your packets copies of 21 and 21 and 22. I'm gonna, I'll focus on 21 and 22. The reason for that is because auditors have to have two years, normally have to have two years. So we had to have 21 audited first, and then we had 21 and 22 audited for consistency purposes. So the 21 statement is included on the 22 statement with the 21 and 22. It's pretty much self-explanatory, but what I wanted to do is just give you some highlights of some of the issues. You'll see in the audit report, there are some, there are some issues that they have come up with. They normally come up with internal control issues. We have already corrected those issues in 23. But for, just so that you are on the same page with us, when I got on the commission and right after we took back over in 2020, we had no accountants. There was no accounting being done. It would have been either been, been being done by the company that leased the hospital for those many years, or it was supposedly being done by the management company. The management company that we, that we ended up letting go and took over control ourself. Since that time, during the course of 2021 and 2022, we now have some accountants on staff and we now have a CFO. So consequently, it, it was, it was untenable, as far as I was concerned, to be able to go through and, and not understand where you were at. And we spent a year and a half not knowing where we were. We had, we had cash flows coming in and we had expenses showing up. But we didn't have balance sheets, we didn't have income statements. And as an accountant, there is absolutely no way I could tell where the hospital was at. Once we got that taken care of, our, our bylaws ask, tell us we're supposed to have a, an annual audit, and we immediately went out and had to do that. That's not a cheap thing to do, but in my opinion, it is well worth it. Particularly as we, as we start to move into some, some new territory with the hospital, because from that, from that standpoint, we can always tell where we stand, even though it's after the fact. Now, we do, I know Steve, Commissioner Holifield listens in on, on the commission meetings. We have full-blown financials at every commission meeting now. We present a balance sheet, income statement, we present all of our cash balances. So that is a, that is a routine part of commission meetings now. So anytime anybody would want to see those financial statements, obviously they're public record at that point, because we actually introduce them at the record for the previous month, they're, they're available. The biggest thing, when I was, before you, before, when I was here previously to talk about the rural emergency hospital, I told you we were losing money, and we were. If you look on page four of the financial statements, you'll see
Which, which year?
It's gonna show you 22, 22 and 21 together. So if you look on the December 31, 22 state report to the commission, and then go to page 10, you're gonna see revenues and expenses for the, for 21 and 22. It's gonna, they're gonna be, they're gonna show you side by side. And it's not the bottom, it's, it's giving us the fund balance totals. But if you look where it says decrease in net position, that is what in a, in a, in a normal business would be called net, net income or loss. You'll see that in both 22 and 21, we had net losses. It's only because we had significant cash balances that we have been able to survive. We ended up getting cash balance, we, we ended up having cash that we'd accumulated after we terminated the, the lease arrangement. So consequently, we've been able to survive. That's what, that's what caused us to have some concern about where we were going. We were losing about a quarter of a million dollars a month. To give you, to give you where we stand today, I, I just, just recently got the December 31, 2023, which you don't have a copy of because they haven't been audited yet. We had net income of $1,175,397. So we actually, we actually reproduced a profit in 2023. Now, we need to be careful with that, because the reason we produced that profit is we sold the rights to our home health license to a third party for $3.6 million. So we had an infusion of $3.6 million into the operations during, during the year 2023. As I say, you, you will see some questions about internal controls, and those have, those have all, those have all been handled. But then I'm gonna direct you to, I'm trying to give you the highlights here, because this gets, as an accountant, I know this, this gets boring very quickly, very fast. If you turn to page 16 in that same report, you're gonna see in the last section where it says CARES Act Relief Funds, I mentioned this briefly when I was here before. We received $3,877,000 in CARES Act money during the, during the pandemic. That money was, came from the Fed and, and state both. We spent that money for what was considered to be legitimate purposes during the course of the pandemic. After the fact, as can happen sometimes, the federal government has come back and said, if you happen to be a city, a part of a city, a city-owned property, which there are not very many hospitals that are owned by the, by the city anymore, we're not gonna allow you to take lost revenues. The reasoning behind that, we, we have our attorneys involved in this. The reasoning behind that is that they assume that the revenues that the hospital receives as part of the cities are tax revenues. We have never received any tax money from the city of Eureka Springs, ever. That money was not tax, tax revenues, they were revenues from hospital services. So we are in fact protesting that and trying to get all of that, all of that straightened out. To tell you that, that we're not in jeopardy of that 3.3 million 87,000 would not be truthful. We could be in jeopardy for that. Our attorney in Little Rock seems to think that we are in a fairly good position for it. So we're gonna continue to push for it. That's why this footnote exists, because it is not included in the income statements anywhere. So if that gets resolved, we'll see $3, $3 million worth of income come through at some point in time, once it's resolved. Hopefully, we'll get it resolved in 2024. I don't know how much time you had, had to, had to look at those. I'll only ca, I'll call your attention to, to one more thing on page three. Very first line, you can see this is the, this is the cash reserves I was telling you about. We had in 2021, we had 2.9 million. In 2022, we have 3,134. And at the end of the year, we have a little over $6 million. And the reason we have a little over $6 million is as of last week, we were in fact granted approval of becoming a rural emergency hospital. The state had already given us $2.4 million as part of that transaction. If you remember when I was here before, I talked about that, about happening. There'll be another 2.4 million coming, once we get through the process and get everything approved. But we are no longer a critical access hospital. As of December 1st, 2023, we are a rural emergency hospital. And we will be reworking our operations to come in compliance with the rural emergency hospital. The reason for the $5 million was to allow us funds to in fact change things, change operations, change facilities to become a rural emergency hospital. I'll give you an example. One of the things we're gonna be doing very quickly is the rooms that are adjoining the emergency room in the hospital do not have oxygen piped into the rooms. We will be using those rooms because we're an emergency hospital. They're gonna become, in the short term, they're gonna become an extension of the emergency room. We are gonna have, we're gonna have it, the hospital repiped to have oxygen come into those rooms. And that's fully, that's fully paid for. Now, I will tell you, based upon the experience that we had with the CARES Act, we are insisting that the state of Arkansas tell us what items are, will, are and are not allowed. So we are continually going back to them and saying, this is what we want to do, is this an approved item? This is what we want to do, is this an approved item? They're a little bit reluctant to do that, but they clearly understand why we're doing it when we have $3 million sitting out there that we have exposure. All in all, from my perspective as an accountant, and from my perspective as the chairman of the commission, the hospital is in good shape. We, we did receive the 2.4 million, we'll get another 2.4 million. We'll start to receive the 250,000 plus per month, as agreed, as being a rural emergency hospital that has nothing to do, it includes Medicare payments, but it really has nothing to do with Medicare. That's the amount that has been promised. Hospitals that agreed to go to a rural emergency hospital, that's the amount that we'll be receiving a month, coming, coming from funds through Medicare or Medicaid and, and health, health department supplements. I am happy to answer any questions that I can. I am really pleased with where we're at with the hospital. The staff is excited, the hospital will be trimmed back. We have not gotten a lot of negative comments about going to a rural emergency hospital. The biggest complaint I will tell you that we've gotten is because we no longer have inpatient. But I will be honest with you, we'd go for months without having an inpatient. And to be staffed to take care of inpatient and not have inpatients that you ever, that you don't get paid for from insurance is something that we just couldn't continue to live with. We, we were staffed up for inpatient. That staff will be either be, be reallocated or through attrition, will go away.
Well, other than inpatient, what other differences is the rural hospital going to create?
The biggest thing is, is it, is it gives us funding to make sure that we're, we're equipped to handle emergencies. It's, the hospital has gone from a hospital to what's really a big emergency room. Okay? So that we can handle, handle all kinds of emergency. We had to have agreements with other hospitals for transfer, because under a rural emergency hospital, you can't, you can keep people for observation for 24 hours. In certain circumstances, you can keep them longer for, longer than that. But if you had, you need to keep them longer for that, you have to be transferred. We have agreements with Mercy in Springfield, with Cox in Springfield. This could give you an idea of how bad things are in the hospital. You had to be, in order, your, your transfer arrangements had to be with a class one or class two hospital. Mercy and Rogers and Springdale's Northwest Hospitals are not, they're class three. So we, we had, our choices got very limited very quickly. It's primarily because they don't have, Mercy, it doesn't have psychiatric on call, and you gotta have psychiatric on call, excuse me, neurology, neurology on call. And they don't have neurologists on staff. So consequently, they lose, they lose their accreditation down to a different level. The biggest thing that we can do going into the future, because we have funds, is we can now look at things like that we can add to supplement healthcare in the community. We're looking at cardiac, we're looking at, we're looking at prenatal, we're looking at mental health. We badly need mental health facilities in the area. So we're looking at that, where we can do clinics as opposed to, to hospital. And so that gives us the ability to expand that. That's one of the reasons, we are relooking at the new hospital that we had designed. We are relooking at that to see how we can allocate that. One of the things we want to do is our physical therapy, if you all know, our physical therapy unit is out off of Passion Play Road. We're very quickly gonna re, do some reworking even with the existing facility to bring PT into the hospital, so that we don't have to pay for, for a separate facility. But we wanna, we wanna look at, at clinics that we can provide additional services to the community for, ones that the community believes we need. And that's, that's, we, we certainly are hearing cardiology. We already have dermatology, we have urology, but we want to, we want to expand that considerably. Also, to, one of the things that the Department of Health required is a complete upgrade of our IT. So we're in the process of completely upgrading all the IT equipment in the hospital, so that we have the ability to better communicate with other hospitals.
I feel like it's truly scaling back so we can make what we do have much better. So bravo, what a feat.
It, it is, it's, it's scaling back so we can, we can do, do things much better. To be honest with you, we can, if, if, say for instance, if we wanted to go to inpatient at some point in time in the future, we as the hospital would be prohibited from doing that. But we could do a partnership with another nonprofit or another hospital in the same building to in fact add that. Or, or if we wanted to add swing, go back and add swing bed again, we could in fact do that. We couldn't do it under the name of the Eureka Springs Hospital Commission, but we could partner with another entity and do it under, under that. So if we, if we see things that we need to do, that's, this has allowed us to look out as opposed to worry about how we keep the hospital doors open. I will tell you something exciting, and Mr. Mayor, you'll be, you'll be impressed with this. Kansas University's School of Architecture heard about us. They have called, they've got a, they're doing a class that this semester will be working on giving us all kinds of new ideas for the remodel of the, of the hospital. Based upon rural health, they've got a, they've got a medical architectural unit at KU. And we had a conference call with them today, they'll actually be in town next week. So that's all, that's all free help.
So that's from KU?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah. They actually, they actually contacted us and said, they had just, they were, they had just done another project with another hospital, it wasn't rural, rural emergency, but they really want to get into this. And so they'll, they'll actually be taking a look at all of our, all of the aspects to, and it's, that's quite exciting. Because they can pull in data from other hospitals that we don't have access to. Yes, sir?
First of all, great job on this, I'm glad to see the direction that it's going. I'm very excited that you're adding a component of mental health. I think that's something that we're all pretty passionate about. I would like to add that maybe we can start looking into specific health concerns for our LGBTQIA community, more specifically our trans community that have a very specific medical needs and so forth and so on. Our gay and lesbian population, access to PrEP to help control HIV. So that's something I would just like to see, that maybe, I don't know if you can do it or not under this new rural hospital agreement, but it's certainly something I think that we need.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. And we can literally, from a clinic standpoint, we can literally do anything we find a need for. The problem we have, and I will tell you the big, I'm gonna be perfectly candid, and anybody that knows anything about mental health in this area, the big problem we have with mental health is we'll be able to find physicians to support it. Because mental health physicians throughout Northwest Arkansas are few and far between, and they're hard to come by. They're either so specialized that they're either for, for young kids, or it's, if you've got a mental issue in this area, and I don't mean Eureka Springs, I mean in the, in Northwest Arkansas, it is nearly impossible to find somebody to help you. And it's a shame. And we're hoping, if we get a new facility, or when we get a new facility, we're hoping that that will help us attract that type of, that, that type of, that type of physician. That's the same problem we have with, with what you're talking about, is making sure that we have the right specialty. Clearly, we don't have the doctors to, to deal with that. Here in Eureka Springs are on staff the hospital, so you have to bring that in from somewhere else.
I do know of one, so if you want to talk.
Please let me know.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, ma'am?
It's Washington Regional, a class one or two?
Yes, it is, class one.
Okay, good.
Washington Regional's class one, I, I will be honest with you, they were the first people we contacted. They're, and I hesitate saying this, but they're a bit bureaucratic. And so it's, we can have as many of those as we want, we're still working on it, but they had, they have to go through the board, they've got a bureaucracy that's not, not as conducive as, as, as Cox was. Cox gave us an answer in about three weeks.
You know, also for the city council, who may not know this, every year, we host a, oh, two or three days for doctors in med school to come up to Eureka Springs to see about setting up practice in rural hospitals, to show them what living in a rural town, rural community looks like. And we usually have, I want to say maybe up to 50 students. And out of that 50, we get two or three that are very active and very interested in moving up to this area. Of course, Eureka Springs is very appealing to the young, young doctors. It's also got some, you know, a lot of those doctors want to go to the big cities, stay in Little Rock or Fayetteville. But we do have a lot of interest. And when I say it's not just Eureka, it's, it's also Berryville, Mercy and its area. But we've been, this is our, I want to say be our third year?
Fourth year, I believe.
Third or fourth year that we've been doing this. We're excited with that program that's coming up. And we get Kent and I, a lot of the, the doctors in the area, the hospitals in the area, all participate and come up to the Basin Park and, and have a good, good session up there.
The two, two best decisions the commission has made is to hire a CFO and a CEO, because we now control our own destiny, and those people are out, and those people are out with the hospital society, which it, whether you want to agree with it or not, hospitals have their own little society, and you've got to, you've got to have, you've got to have the connections within the hospital to get into that. They won't, they won't talk to me, but they'll talk to the CEO of the hospital.
You mentioned that the, it's on, the hospital's on city land, but it's not city-funded. What is the business structure there?
The hospital has always been, since, it, it is on city property. All the buildings are physically owned by the, by the city, with the exception of one. So, but the, the hospital itself is run independent, under the direction of the commission. And so there is no taxation that ever comes, there's never been any loans guaranteed or anything that I know of, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but never been any loans guaranteed or anything that is, that has taken funds from the city other than, than the physical facilities. Now, those facilities are on the books of the city, they're not on the books of the hospital.
It's similar to the transit, it's self-supporting through its own contributions, and, and the hospital's the same way.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's a city property, but it's, it functions as its own entity.
Okay. Who knew? Didn't know. Thank you.
You did a great job, Kent, thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kent, we appreciate it. All right, that takes care of, of the hospital. Our next, we do have, just for the public out there, we do have a couple of vacancies in parks and HDC. So if you're out there and interested in being on the parks or the HDC, please come in and pick up an application and fill it out. Our next item is, we have two positions to be renewed, they're existing commission, commission members. LB Wilson for position two, and David Danberg for position three. Both LB is here, and David is over here in the corner. So if you hadn't had a chance to meet him, LB is a native of Eureka Springs, and David's been here, probably his grandmother was here, and he came up to visit. So he's a Texas boy, but we won't hold that against him. He'd been here to come up to Eureka since I want to say five years old. So they both are real familiar with the area. Ms. Green?
I'd like to make a motion to renominate David Danberg for position three on the cemetery commission.
Second.
All right, got a motion to nominate David Danberg for position three on the cemetery commission? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to renew LB Wilson?
I'll make a motion that we renew LB Wilson's for position two on the cemetery commission.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion to approve LB Wilson's position two. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank both LB and David for your service and everything you do for the cemetery, we certainly appreciate it. So, thank you. And thank you, Kent, for your service on the hospital. All right, that brings us up to citizens' comments, public comments?
There is.
If we have any? All right, we will continue on then. Our next item of business is sewer testing update. Simon is homesick, and so I actually, I probably should have deferred the, this meeting, this item on the agenda until the next time.
I'll make a motion that we defer.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the same thing with the water leak.
I'll make a motion that we defer the water leak till next time.
Second.
All right, Ms. Green made motion, and Mr. Meyer, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is our reading of Okay. Our next item is our reading of sidewalk, the reading of our solid waste collections. I believe this is our third reading?
Second.
Second reading.
Yeah.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
All right, Mr. Myers?
I got some suggestions from some constituents. I'm sure everybody got one. I'd like to make a motion that we change a little bit in section one and two. Standard weekly trash service shall be for one 35-gallon container or one trash bag with a maximum capacity of 35 gallons. And section two, if more than one container or a bag of trash is placed at the curb for disposal, it must be identified with a bag tag.
So in essence, in section two, it'd say, any overflow or excess bag of waste over one bag, show, one bag not marked will be left on curb.
Yeah.
Section two. And section one says, standard trash service shall be one bag or can up to 35 gallons.
Yeah.
All right. Discussion? Ms. Lane?
I like it. It's a little more clear of what the rules are. And although I would like to continue the education and make sure that it's very clear to the public, but this is definitely more clear for our ordinance.
Anybody else?
Did you want to see it? Was there a second?
Get a motion to amend the ordinance?
I think Harry did. He made a motion.
Did you make a motion? I didn't hear the motion part. Did I get a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Holfield made second to amend the ordinance. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Can I make sure I got that right?
Okay.
So section two, you just want to change it to, if more than one container or bag of trash is placed at the curb for disposal, it must be identified with a bag tag. You still want to have the bag tags can be purchased for $1.75 at City Hall or where designated?
I don't like it.
Or do you ever remove that?
I don't like it, but I guess I'll leave it in there.
Okay. And then for section one, you want to change it to?
Just, just one 35-gallon container or one bag with the maximum capacity of 35 gallons.
Let me throw in something here. When the clerk read $1.75 each at City Hall, maybe we might want to make that $2 because of change. A lot of people may not have 75 cents and they, $2 is, you give them $2 or $5, we got dollar bills, but we don't always have quarters. So that's only.
I make a motion, we amend section two to, from $1.75 to $2.
I'll second.
I'm going to consider all that as one, one motion, or one amendment. Is that okay, Mr. City Attorney?
So it's?
Well, I can amend my motion.
All right.
I'll amend my motion to include a $2 tag for the bags.
Oh, waste of, any overflow or excess of that.
So the amendment is, in section one, it would be, standard trash service shall be one bag or can up to 35 gallons. And in section two, additional 35-gallon bags of waste would be identified. Bags can be purchased for $2 each at City Hall or where designated by the city. Any overflow or excess bag of waste over one bag shall, bag not marked with a bag top will be left on the curb. Is that correct? Mr. Alvinzino?
Yeah, I just, I have a question about the wording in section one that's being proposed, especially for those that live.
Well, let's, let's deal with the amendment first.
Gotcha.
Okay. And then we'll go ahead. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment as stated? Saying five is saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved. I'm sorry, Ms. Alvinzino?
So the wording in section one, with the amendment proposed, for those that live in properties that do not have a can, we're saying that they're only limited to one bag?
One 35-gallon bag.
Still, my question is, we're going to limit them to one bag?
Yeah.
35 gallons, correct.
That's a big bag, David.
I know it's a big bag, but it's a... So we're getting... Go ahead.
If, I was just trying to make it easier for the guys picking up the trash, so that they know, I mean, we've got trash bags that are 15-gallon, 20-gallon, 25-gallon and whatever. So for them to assess how many gallons of trash is put out there and how many bags to leave behind might be a little difficult. And that's the reason behind that.
Mr. Holfield?
Now, our sanitation folks said, how they do in the other cities, you can have two smaller bags out there as long as they don't go over 35 gallons, which I like that concept. So if you have this trash, the kitchen trash, the white ones, you can put two of those out there instead of putting them in one big bag. As long as it doesn't go over 35 gallons.
Ms. Green?
I was just going to mention that, just what we changed is how Berryville does it. And they don't have any problem over there.
Does the council feel satisfied with the verbiage, it shall be one bag or can up to 35 gallons?
Yep.
Is explanatory enough?
Yeah, I think so.
I believe that the cans are 35 gallons?
Couple sizes.
Huh?
Isn't there a couple sizes of those?
There are, but I think it's a 35-gallon. If they're over 35 gallons, they'll have to have extra. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? All right, get a motion then to put ordinance number 2348 as amended on its third and final reading.
Second.
Second reading.
Second reading.
By title only?
Yeah.
All right. I think Ms. Green made the motion and Mr. Meyer seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Do you want to, do you want to see the motion? That way we got it on the record. Do you want them to?
I can do it.
Make it?
I'll make a motion that we read ordinance number 2348 by title only with the amended changes.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Melissa Green?
Yes.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
David Alvinzino?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2348 and ordinance changing solid waste collection.
Get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2348 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Melissa Green?
Yes.
David Alvinzino?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
All right, so moved. Thank you, guys. All right, our next item of business is sidewalk discussion. Get a motion to discuss?
A move we discuss?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Holfield?
I think where we left off was Ida said she was going to talk to somebody about, some of the city has done these sidewalk studies.
Could you talk a little closer? I can't hear.
Try to pull it in a little closer. Ida was going to look into, I think a city or a town that's done this before and give some input about doing a study to find out what we'd have to do to get our sidewalks more accessible.
I think the mayor sent one over to McClellan. I asked, I finally got ahold of the West Memphis clerk. Their tourism direct, I think it's their tourism director, they did a study. They were telling me, theirs was, he was supposed to email me a breakdown, but he didn't get that to me today. He said he'd probably get it to me tomorrow.
Where is that from?
But he's talking about West Memphis, Arkansas. They hired a company out of Memphis because they're right there. And they said theirs was $75,000. And that was not very much sidewalk. That was just the sidewalks in front of their city buildings. So.
That's just a study?
Mm-hmm. Just a consultation evaluation. And then they'll tell you which ones the ADA may gave you like a reasonable exception on. But they said it wasn't very much sidewalk that they had studied. It was just the sidewalk in front of city buildings. So, and that was $75,000.
And when I talked to McClellan, because it's a labor-intensive, it'd be a minimum of $40,000.
For the study?
For the study.
Okay.
No work?
Yeah, no work, just the study.
It'll buy a lot of concrete.
Yes.
I hope so.
Ms. Lane?
A constituent brought up, what if we, of course, need the study. We, of course, need to find out what we, what, in what order we need to figure out what we're doing. But she brought up a raising the parking fees. Right now, they're a dollar for $150,000. If we raised them to $2, that would be $300,000. You know, $3, $450,000. And that's quite a bit in the, in the fund to help, you know, go a little further when we do find out what and where to go. So.
Well, that certainly, it's another source of revenue for sure.
How do we go about bringing that up or further that?
That's a separate issue.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So we can look at that. I think the question is, you know, the council wants to spend $40,000 to $70,000 on a sidewalk study, when we've already got a semi-study done. Ms. Green?
Well, this is along the same lines. Why can't public work for right now? I mean, it's pretty obvious sidewalks are out of the question with our $6 million sewer plant coming up. Why can't we put up signs that say, you know, uneven sidewalks and slippery when wet? Just, I mean, I think that would really help a lot of things. And Autumn, I mean, that's a good suggestion about the parking, but our tourists complain as it is. And, you know, I just, why are we going to continue to tax them and tax them? So I think it's in our laws that the owners are responsible for their sidewalks. And, I mean, I don't want to have to replace mine, but I own a $300,000-plus house. If I can't afford a sidewalk at $300,000 house, then what am I doing living here? So, you know, and I, that's not going to make me real popular, but that is our law. And that's something we probably need to start exploring. Because our residential areas are horrible. I really, on the walk we took downtown, I wasn't that unimpressed with our sidewalks downtown. Yeah, they're uneven and, you know, tough. But I think if we had some signage and maybe certain areas, like the building down on the corner of Penna Grass has the handrail, you know, certain areas might, we might think about putting some handrails and stuff up.
A lot of that's administrative, but I think they're good suggestions.
Okay. Well, would you consider the signs?
Yeah. I can talk to Simon.
Thank you.
For sure. Mr. Meyer?
You know, even Bobby Ray coerced some property owners to replace their sidewalks. Local flavor.
Yeah.
They poured an all-new sidewalk down there. It looks pretty good. So if...
So did amigos.
So if we can get...
With the cross.
Yeah, and so is local flavor.
Yeah. So if we can get our building inspector to...
And that's what Bobby Ray had established some priorities. And a lot of it, if they're really, really bad, then what we wanted to do was, instead of making them, depending on the situation, if the building is under construction, then that would include the sidewalks. That would be part of the construction cost, remodeling and, or new construction. And we had some along Spring Street that has happened on there. Some of them still need some. And I think we're still trying to get a list of, and I got to talk to the building official. Unfortunately, the list that Bobby Ray had disappeared between the time of change and transition of inspectors, you know, it's just pieces of paper. It wasn't done on a computer. So it's, it's a term. But it's, again, I think it's a process that we'll take care of. It's just something we just won't be able to do immediately. But we are making, I think, making progress.
Just chipping away at it.
Yeah.
I don't see how we're chipping away at it. I've been here 11 years. I haven't seen any improvement in the sidewalks.
There has been.
Say that we have, we had a couple places, but, I mean, you walk around down Spring Street and stuff, you break your neck if you're walking along those sidewalks and stuff. If we do signage, there'd be a lot of signage in town.
Well, no, I mean, ever saw.
I'm talking. And I think that, say, well, sometime in the future we'll work on this, is not good enough. I mean, can we at least look at Bobby, or not Bobby Ray, our building inspector enforcing ordinance that's there? Why don't we start looking at properties that need it the most and say, then make the homeowners or the business owners do this? I feel like we're stuck between the two things. Well, they're responsible for it, we're not, but we're not going to enforce it, so it's not going to get done.
Mr. Holfield, I don't think that's what I said. I said, I think they are being enforced. And there are houses on Spring Street that have new sidewalks. And the sidewalks that, when new and remodeling projects are happening, it's, they're being, the sidewalks will be part of the project. The worst-case scenarios, and again, we have to look and see where we are on that, because I don't know. Bobby Ray was making an effort at it. And you said five years. We've been doing this for five years too. And Bobby Ray, I had to get on Bobby Ray constantly. So we are making progress. I disagree with you on that. Ms. Lane?
You said that there was a partial study done. What were you referring to there?
From Bobby Ray going around and looking at which sidewalks were in bad shape and which needed immediate work and attention.
But was that the list that you couldn't find?
Yes.
Or is that, okay. Okay, so we really don't have a study in hand?
We don't have a list, no.
Okay.
We can get a list.
It needs to be redone.
Okay, I got you.
But we can do that for less than $40,000.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I know Jacob does have some CFOs he issued with condition to repair the sidewalk. Do you want to maybe ask him for that list of who he's?
I could ask him for that.
Yeah, because he should be able to pull that through BSNA.
All right, anybody else? All right, next item, new business, resolution designating the mayor to execute documents for funding for the Arkansas National Resource Commission.
Motion to discuss?
All right, this is a resolution that...
Second.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
This is a resolution that McClellan, in their presentation to us the last time, said that we needed to do before we can proceed. So this is that first step in trying to find funding for our sewer plant. I will say that I have some good news, maybe, I don't want to jinx it, but there, I was talking to Northwest Arkansas Economic Development Company, and we may be eligible. And she's looking into it for a grant. It won't be much, but it may be 25% to 35%, which is...
That would be, that would be nice.
So, anyway, this is still the first step that we'll need to do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's this for?
Beg your pardon?
What's this for?
Sewer.
A sewer?
Yeah.
Water sewer plant.
I'll make a motion that we assign the resolution a number and read it into passage.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Green made the motion, sign the resolution, read for passage, and Mr. Alvinzino seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, saying five is saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That probably should have been voiced though.
No.
I bet.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Yeah.
No voice, roll call.
David Alvinzino?
Yes.
Melissa Green?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yeah.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Assigning resolution number 853. A resolution designating and authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas owns and operates a sewer system in order to provide sewer service to, to meet the needs of the city and its inhabitants. And whereas the city council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and its inhabitants to apply for the assistance from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, the ANRC, in order to make certain improvements to the system. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor of the city as signatory agent or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized and directed to make application for assistance administered by the ANRC and to execute, when approved by the city council, a bond purchase agreement and instruments issued or made pursuant, thereto on behalf of the city from time to time. Section two, that the manager of the system as a signatory agent or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city all other documents and certificates required.
Thank you. Brings us up to our next resolution. Our next business is a resolution to approve the 2024 budget.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, any, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, we've seen the budget and we've had several workshops. Anybody have any discussion, comments?
Just want to thank Michael. Like I said, I, it's, it's a very strong but conservative budget, and I really think he put a lot of thought and effort. And I, again, want to thank our new police chief for his presentation and the fire chief. I was extremely impressed.
Mr. Meyer?
I think that, uh, finance director has made it easier for us to understand the budget since he's been here, and he deserves compliments for that. At least we can see bank balances now. We can see all sorts of things that we never saw before. I appreciate it. I make a motion, we sign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
And I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Meyer made a motion to assign a number and read it for passage, and Ms. Green seconded.
Steve Holyfield?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Melissa Green?
Yes.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Assigning resolution number 854. A resolution providing for and adopting budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024. Appropriating money for each and every item of expenditures there and provided for. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of proposed budgets. And whereas in the opinion of the city council, the proposed 2024 budget presents as accurately as possible the city's anticipated revenues and expenditures for the 2024 calendar year. And now therefore, be it resolved by the city of, council of city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Ooh, that was hard. Section one, this resolution shall be known as the budget resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024. And the attached 2024 budget documents reflect estimated revenues and expenditures in detail for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues, and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period. Section two, the amounts for revenue and expenditures proposed in the 2024 municipal budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purpose set forth the calendar year ending December 31st, 2024. Estimated revenues, general fund, $6,7,625. Street fund, $996,875. Lot fee, $440,500. Capital fund, $458,000. Debt service, $305,500. Capital projects fund, $500,000. Administrative, administration of justice, $102,200. District court automation, $11,275. Fireman's pension fund, $92,000. Water and sewer fund, $2,177,750. Transit fund, $1,861,767. Estimated expenditures, general fund, $1 million, sorry, $5,616,191. Street fund, $977,765. Lot fee, $413,100. Capital fund, $458,000. Debt service, $305,500. Capital funds project, capital projects fund, $500,000. Administrative justice, $10,1,950. District court automation, $6,050. Fireman's pension fund, $92,000. Water and sewer fund, $2,383,487. Transit fund, $1,675,557. I fixed that. I fixed it online. Kim printed you the one straight from Michael, I think.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That brings us up to our fourth quarter 2022 financial summary. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
All right, you guys know the drill by this point. Um, I got the comparables for the accounts payable, cash receipts and payroll. Compared 2022 and 2023 in the graph provided. Um, if you want specifics on these, I do have them in my office. Um, it's just hundreds of pages and has sensitive information, so I don't give them out to everyone. And then you also have bank balances, which you receive in your financial reports from Michael, as, as well as long-term debt. So those aren't any different from the ones he gives you. I'm just required by the state to do this as well. And that's it.
Any questions, comments? Uh, I want to, can you tell the, Madam Clerk, I really appreciate the, the graphs and the chart here. I think it makes it real easy to read real quickly, so I appreciate that. That's what I've been trying to get Michael to do.
I call it that with crayons.
He's not even listening to you.
Yeah.
See her practice with crayons when she was a little girl.
Actually, Michael's incorporated that, so.
Oh, you're too late.
All right, um, gender said it. Anybody right now? All right, if not, I'll start with Mr. Avanzino for city council committee.
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, our Public Works crew for everything they, they did to keep our streets as clean as possible, as well as RDOT, and especially our police department for responding to accidents and all that stuff. Uh, I think we had a great Ozark Mountain Music Fest. It was good to see everybody in town. Saw quite a few hotels, uh, at No Vacancies, so that was a really good sign. And also, you know, a lot of our small and local family-owned businesses here in town have suffered during this, these, um, snowstorms and ice storms and seems to be one thing after the other. So everybody out there, just please shop local, support local, uh, help us get back on our feet and recover from what we had to lose by closing down.
Thank you. Mr. Holyfield?
I heard from several people out there as well that, uh, they're really happy where the streets were cleared and, and accessible as soon as possible. I think our, our street service people have done a great job this year. CIPC meetings this coming Wednesday. We have a workshop at 4:30, regular meeting at 6:00. And, um, I like the cold, but I'm kind of getting tired of it already, so.
Ms. Green?
Oh, I want to echo David on shop, shop small. Let's help our businesses out. And again, both David and Steve, I want to echo, our Public Works, our police did a wonderful job. And so I can't thank them enough. We weren't stranded as bad as we normally used to be. And, you know, I want to just talk a little bit about, you know, we're, we're being faced with a very big bill on this sewer plant, but we got even bigger bills on our infrastructure coming up. And these are things that we're going to, this council is getting tasked with. And it's not an easy job sitting up here and making these decisions. So, you know, I'm tired of just, it's just a few people, but you know what? You get to step up to the plate and take this kind of pressure. And I'm really proud of each and every one of us sitting here. You know, we've kind of risen to the occasion, so that's all I got to say.
Ms. Slane?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Meyer?
Well, uh, I stayed inside, so I don't know how the roads were. It's the first day I've been out, but from what I hear, things, uh, things went right. Billy says there weren't many wrecks and no injuries, I don't think. That's, uh, that's good news. And, yeah, the quarters, saving a quarter at the, for the bags, I do have a little remark about that. I, uh, I cleaned the lint filter out in my washing machine, and I pulled $15 worth of change. And I added it to the change I had in this jar and took it into the bank, and it came up to $85, so.
Ooh, you're buying pizza tonight.
I'm going to go to your lint machine.
Yeah.
All right, um, I, I want to thank, uh, Public Works and, and all those people that have been out there. You know, this, uh, last week, uh, we've all been through some of the coldest weather. I forgot what the date was, uh, last time it was this cold, uh, but it's been a while. Fortunately, it didn't last real long, but it did long enough. And this morning, uh, it was pretty slippery out there. And so I hope everybody made it safely and, and, uh, still watch your step because there's still some slick spots out there. And same thing with the police department. They've done an excellent job of, of being out there during this cold weather. I can't imagine almost a worse job than being in Public Works, unless it's a policeman right now, a police and fire. So they're to be commended for our services. I think the cities should be real proud of, of being a small town of the services that we're able to provide for the public, so. But coming up, we've got some, uh, we had last week some, an excellent time, uh, with the festival, and, uh, the concert was almost, if not sold out here in the auditorium, I understand. So that's pretty amazing for Saturday night, as cold as it was. I saw people standing outside and I went, "Brrr." They really wanted to go to the auditorium. And so coming up, uh, on the, we have on the January 26th through the 28th, and then on the 2nd through the 4th, at the Crescent Hotel, we have the 13th Annual Paranormal Weekend. So that's, that's a Eureka Weekend for us. And then following that, on the 27th, at 5:00 PM at the Grand Tavern, we'll have the Mardi Gras Crude de la Joye Formal Ball and Murder Mystery. Uh, it sounded like a lot of fun, so if you're wanting to get out and party, that's, sounds like a good time to do it. Then on the Mardi Gras Coronation Ball, it's on the 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Crescent Hotel, Crystal Dining Room. If you've never been, it's, it's an event to behold. It's a lot of fun. And then we have the Mardi Gras Crude of Crazy Old Night Parade on the 2nd at 6:00 PM coming down Spring Street. And again, that should be real fun. The Mardi Gras Blacklight Ball on the 3rd at 7:00 PM at Chelsea's. And then the Masquerade Ball on the 9th at 6:00 PM at the end of the Ozarks. And then we have the Crazy Old Day Parade on the 10th, uh, at 2:00 PM down Spring Street. So Mardi Gras here, along with the paranormals. They probably all mix together in one respect or another. So anyway, have a good time, be safe, stay warm, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Get a second. All right, so moves. Thank you, guys.